Okay, this is a special meeting of the Freshwater Ways Advisory Board. We're gonna do things just to fuzz different because there's so many new people here, so until you, after you elect officers at this meeting, I'll just go through the steps so we follow all the OPMA things and then the chair will take over at next meeting, whoever that is. So first, we'll do roll call.
Oliver Dorian.
Connie Clifford.
Don Garns.
Susan Delayer.
Barbara Hafer.
Okay, and then Grant Shaker is not here as of yet. So the first thing we would do is approval of the meeting agenda, so we need a motion to approve the agenda that's been presented. So move and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the next is public comments. We didn't receive any written public comments, so we'll take comment from anybody in the room. Jane?
I noticed it was on the agenda, and so I'm just hoping to hear that we've made some progress with the IAVMP where maybe we can utilize it here soon.
We're headed in that direction.
Okay. That was my main experience, but we're not getting that taken seriously.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, anybody online? Vida, do you have a public comment?
No comment, thank you.
And Sal?
Oh, during this meeting, are you going to kind of bring us up to date on what's going on with the water quality? Because I went to Chinook Park last night, you know, before sunset, and looked mighty brownish-green.
It was brownish-green. Okay, so then we're going to pause, and since there are so many new members, the mayor was going to speak for just a few minutes, and then we'll get back to the agenda.
First of all, thank you for everyone who's serving on freshwaterways. You know, all of our boards are so important because they give the citizen to be part of helping set whatever policies and directions up. Freshwaterways is a more complicated board than some other boards, not to diminish anybody, but the freshwaterways, we don't have, we don't have the answers of freshwaterways. I mean, that we are enlisting, we will be working with the Conservation District to help us. We have studies that we're working on. But again, we are one of our biggest challenges. We have a lot of man-made canals that cause other issues that we have. Our prior boards have, if you go back to the history of Ocean Shores, are talking about the same things you're talking, or you will be talking today and for the future. I mean, it's how do you maintain them? What do we do with the weeds? What do we do with the algae? I mean, just, just all of that habit stuff. So you, so my expectations, especially the news people that I had the privilege of being part of the interview board with it, and as I have said, you do not need to be the expert and nor did we put you on the board because you are the smartest person in the room. But what you can help us do is as we get these reports back, help interpret of what a course of action is going to be. And I would encourage you that if there's something that you don't know and we need to have further clarification, that you let us know so that we can ask. Because most of our reports are being done by some organizations, some consultant, and sometimes consultants are way over my head. And so sometimes we need to get it back to what are we actually talking about? And then, of course, one of the challenges that you will have on being on this board, like any other board, is is the amount of money that you have to spend, or we have to spend towards whatever project that we're working on. And so there is some multiple things that you, that you will have to think about, help us see a path forward. And I would tell you, there's probably no easy answer. Because whatever path that we go, there are others that will have a different path that we should go, you know? And so some, some, that's going to be a lot of conversation that we just need to have, is whatever is that path? So we've got two very qualified people that are my city staff that are here, Marshall and Becky. They will help work with you and, and they're both of wealth of knowledge, and both of them come from a different thing. Becky's about how getting things done. And Marshall is about how, why things are there and how they're being interpreted. So and together, they probably make a pretty good team as far as getting, getting things done. So I, as the mayor, I kind of take a hands-off approach as far as the boards go. Usually, these are the two that make the, let me know if there's an issue that I need to do. But I think it's important that you know how much I think that your job is so important. Because you were the ones that would be able to help us as we bring it before council, whatever, whatever decision has been made from here, recommendation, and how to explain it. So, so again, I thank you. I appreciate you taking the time. Voluntarism is such an important thing, you know? Waterways are very important. So my door is always open if you have any questions or any concerns or whatever. No, we're, we're here to try to make the city better. So that's my, that's my big skill.
Okay. So if you don't know, this is Bruce Malloy, and Bruce Malloy does the freshwater waste corporation. And so at all of these meetings, he gives a report of what the freshwater waste corporation is working on, help that they may need, upcoming cleaning events, so Bruce?
I'll keep this short. We don't have much time. We're, we're working on, we're going to do a mailer to 7,500 residents. It's a part of our membership drive for 2023, 2024. We're working currently on a succession plan for each one of us. As we're, we're aging out, like we'll have somebody in place to step right in, so we don't leave y'all in a lurch. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you and, and understanding John's vision of the waterways just to see that we can mesh in there smoothly. We do have one report. We're, this is a record low for all the waterways for the canals. In normal years, differential between high water and low water was 18 inches. This year, it's 24 inches. Doesn't sound like a lot, it's just six inches. But people have little sandy beaches in front of their house because of the public canals, and the water is extremely low. Went through Billmore Shallows, going from the canal, Bell Canal into Lake Bernard. I got readings from my sounder of between 1, 1.5 feet. I have a pontoon boat I can get through there with just a prop in the water, but other people with conventional boats cannot. You know, I don't know if we have to, I'll ask Marshall if we have to put signs up, you know, extremely low. Those two spots, one, the other spot is Fishhook Canal. They were between 2 and 2 and 1/2 feet, which we're, you know, I'm fine with pontoon, but you know, long shaft, regular runabout here. Think, think about, I'll give you a call and work on maybe some quick signings.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do there.
We had, I had a report last weekend of a dead deer in the water. We went out there, take a look, couldn't find it. I don't know if nature just did its, its thing or we probably are gonna have to, we've done that a couple other times, you know, get it out of the water. I'll have the city crew, you know, all the way. Take it to one of the boat ramps. That's that's about it. I'm taking Barbara for a tour. A date to be set. We've missed each other a couple times and to see the waterways and along with Connie. And I think Barbara's stuck. That's about all I have for right now. Any questions?
All good, okay. Um, thank you, Bruce. So the next one is the fun one because it means you get to take over. But this is board membership and officers. So since there's so many new board members, we still have one vacancy on the board. And of course, Grant isn't here, but we have a board chair and then a vice chair and a secretary. So the board chair will be the one that will run these meetings, similar to what I'm doing right now. Vice chair instead that the chair is gone, and then secretary will be responsible for the meeting notes. So we'll start with chair, if anybody wants to make a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Barbara Hafer.
Okay.
I'll just cheer.
Is there any more nominations? Okay, so there's a nomination for chair for Barbara Hafer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Barbara will be chair. I'll work with you on, you probably already know all the things. So vice chair nomination.
I nominate Susan.
Okay. Any more? All those in favor of Susan being a vice chair? All right. And then secretary, don't everybody fight over this one?
I nominate Barbara.
Okay. Any more nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Robert E., Secretary? Okay. I'll wait with them. Meeting. Okay, cool. So you have a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. So for this meeting, we're just gonna go through it and then you'll take over. Okay, so the next three are going to be Becky, and she's gonna give you an update on all the things that are listed on your agenda.
All right. So what Sarah awesome to put together for us, because this is a lot of paper. And sorry to the trees that we took out for this, but you have the Aqua Technics generated IAVMP, which is the Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan that they wrote for 2023. And if you just kind of look through a little bit, you'll see that this is the version that has red marks, items to be updated in it. We sent the IAVMP to a company called Anchor QEA because ecology didn't like many of the things that are in the IAVMP and pretty much said that we can't use it for funding a pair of others and other grants, which is a big piece of what we want to be able to use the IAVMP for. And then there has been some back and forth that ecology doesn't fund those things anyway. So talking with this group about our path forward, these are some of the things that I need help from you to determine what do we want the IAVMP to do? What can it do? And the last document that's in your book, the last tab, this is a citizen's manual for developing an integrated aquatic vegetation management plan. And so it kind of seems like we're starting from scratch and reinventing the wheel, but we're really not because we have, we have one that's written for 2023 that we'll use going forward. And we also have the comments from ecology that are in your binder. We have the comments pushing back to ecology from Aqua Technics. And I also have Anchor QEAs. There are subject matter expert on the waterways. I have their comments back as well. So you have all of the back and forth comments in this binder with the updated comments, the Anchor QEA, things should be put in and put in out, marked in red. So that is what I need from you guys going forward is between now and next meeting to do a deep dive into the IAVMP and, and give me advice, you know, wants, needs for the IAVMP. Another big piece of what this document is going to lead to is it's going to be part of our freshwater waste master plan, which is a really large, all encompassing plan of what we're going to do. That's kind of going to be our next big step as well, which we will be working on that in the same timeframe in conjunction with this IAVMP. It's something that's important to council that we start pushing forward on that as well. Any questions? So this original document, is this similar to the one that was presented? It's the same one that was presented earlier with the red mark, not the eighth through it. So I feel like it's really close. I just need to know, the Aqua Technics that wrote it, Terry McNabb's response has been, while ecology says we can't use it for this, it has been stated that it is important to your citizens that it's to be used for that, and that's what's in here. But I, I need you guys to really look at it and say, okay, now we do need this for funding. We need this for grants, because I'm pretty sure we do. But I, I kind of feel like part of this that's written maybe is a little bit big for the IAVMP and should have been pulled out and put into the freshwater waste master plan. But again, that's something that I want to hear what you guys think about that. Then this other piece that I handed out, if I didn't give one to you guys when you got here, this is the notice that went out for the herbicide treatment that was done by Northwest Aquatic Ecosystems in August. And I'm giving it to you as a reference because there's information in here, and then there's some back and forth also on the emails that talks about treating milfoil, not treating milfoil, and just the different plants that are being treated. And they're listed in here. So I wanted you to know like what we treated, what we treated them with, so that you've got that reference as you're going through the documents too. And as you're going through, if you have any questions, send me email, let me know. I probably won't know the answer, but I know who does. So I'll reach out to the person that does. I'll reach out to Anchor QEA and Aqua Technics. I have needed, I need to be the resource that reaches out to them because we pay them by the hour. We have an hourly rate with them. So rather than having six or seven different people reaching out to them, because you guys can have the same questions, and so they're getting the same questions from two or three different people sending questions to me, and I'll reach out to them. And the Conservation District will also be a big piece in helping us with this when they come on board, and they should be officially on board pretty soon, end of September, beginning of October. So we'll also be utilizing them, and they're a great resource for this. So that'll be great to have. That's what I have for the IAVMP.
And I've got to go to another meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to those who are officers of the board. And it looks like that if you don't raise your hand, you're going to get nominated, right? Thanks.
Take care. Bye, John. Does anybody have questions or want to have a special thing?
I have a quick question. And it's a, you're questioning a couple of spots hydroacoustic mapping. We have a complete mapping in color, just the whole, but do not have species. Who is going to identify the species of weed and have it, have that done by Nick? It's, it's a it's a concern. That's the mapping that was done. That took a full day and two people from Northwest Aquatic Ecosystems to do that. And it's I think we could, you know, how important is that? Can we get that, some of that? We know that there's, I can rattle off four or five weeks of the waterway about exactly what canal I had, what seemed a little bit right, it seemed a little bit of like busy work.
Northwest Aquatic Ecosystems, they might have that information since they were just here and treated.
Yes.
And he was just here a week or two ago, and I, he said, we completed the electronic survey of the canals. The data looks great, and the canals all have responded well to the treatment. There should be no issues. So he may have that. I'll reach out to him and find out before anybody puts in a bunch of time. That was also my update for freshwaterways. Any other conversation or questions?
Just real quick, the MSDS sheets, where are they located on the city website?
They are located in the freshwaterways folder on the city website.
Okay.
I can send those, I'll, the link to you guys if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Those are really my updates and my needs.
We have the freshwaterways master plan.
Yeah, so the freshwaterways master plan is going to be, this is going to be what, this is going to be part of it. And then I really need you guys to tell me, what do we need in the freshwaterways master plan? Because I, I don't know. I can ask the experts, but I also need to know what's important to you as an Ocean Shore resident. What do you want in our freshwaterways master plan?
Going throughout some ideas on some things that maybe we've been thinking about.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is not a weed, this is a meat. Something I really thought about was because we have so much waterways now, and we have old, old homes that have been there for a while, and a lot of them are probably grandfathered, I don't know. And then we have new people. And I thought it could be extremely helpful if, wherever you live on the waterways, if you knew what your rules were. Because I think a lot of people don't know what the rules are as far as, you know, what you can do, like how far you can go down. What, what is down there that you should not touch in the waterways? That sort of thing. I don't know, what are the rest of you think?
So, so the city has what's called a shoreline master program that applies to all properties. And to, to take the term off the table, grandfathered isn't a term that we use. It's a legal non-conforming, meaning that it was done before the regulation existed or, or was, or was put it in before the regulations changed. In most of the development in Ocean Shores, there is very little legal non-conforming that was put in with permits. And so that's the difference between somebody that bootlegged something in back in the eighties and something that was permitted back in the eighties that was legal by code, but wouldn't be legal today. Shoreline stabilization is probably the biggest change that you'll see. You know, if you drive around the lakes, you'll see great examples of things that we just don't do today, and they're not allowed by code. And that is the creosoted timbers being used to hold back banks, big rock walls, holding back sheer banks and stuff like that. The, the original shoreline master program allowed for vegetation to serve almost all of that stabilization. That's why you have a 10-foot vegetative buffer that, that is supposed to extend from the edge of the freshwaterway up 10 feet as a minimum in the high intensity areas. That vegetative buffer is actually 25 feet. And all of these, you know, rules and distances and stuff like that are identified in the shoreline master program, which is available on the city's website under the planning department. So I always encourage people, along with a short educational session when I'm out on site with, with the different residents or whatever. You know, I also try to encourage them to look at that document, because you're right. There, there are a lot of new people coming to town that if you lived anywhere on the I-5 corridor on a waterway, then you have a good idea of what the regulations are, and it, and it was very restrictive up there and is very restrictive, just as it is down here. Our regulation is not based on what the city of Ocean Shores wants. We've imposed some additional restrictions, not very much, but the regulations are based on the Washington State Shoreline Management Act. And so our local regulation is written in support of that act. So we just went through a periodic review this year. And matter of fact, we're, our, our shoreline master program is at the Department of Ecology right now, having the final approval done. The, the Planning Commission and the City Council both approved what we had. And so it is with the Department of Ecology now. Once that regulation is published, it'll have the latest and greatest revisions from the Shoreline Management Act of the state and a few regulatory changes that we made at the local level. And most of that had to do with being able to do freshwater emergent wetland delineation along the lakes and canals in-house through either Chris, who's, so you guys from the board, Chris Pro is my city planner. She works with me and spends a great deal of, of time in the shorelines and is doing a great job out there. She'll mark the vegetative buffer and go out and do final follow-up inspections on dock permits and, you know, CIPA checklist that have been done. And so anyway, as, as those regulations get revised, you know, that's, you'll be able to find those on there. It's a pretty easy to read document. It will take you, because they break it down by commercial development, recreational development, docks, industrial. Sometimes the regulations are the same for both sections, but sometimes you'll hop around a little bit. And, and if a person asks questions, I can help you with that interpretation. That's most of my function at this point with this board is to try to keep everybody out of trouble. The Department of Ecology is holding my feet to the fire. And likewise, I will advise you guys as we get projects going. Bruce and I have worked on some emergency tree removal, danger tree removal in the shorelines and stuff like that. Their group is, has been really instrumental in getting those kind of projects going or completed along with working with city staff and contractors that have been hired. As an update, it's a question that came up over the last six months regularly in a meeting is, do we have a, a hydraulics project approval permit for working in the shorelines along the waterways for hazard tree removal? And I'm reporting that we do now have a current HPA that will allow us to work in the, in the freshwaterways for hazard tree removal. And that involves restoration of the shoreline if we have to take trees down. There are some mitigation requirements. You know, you can take a tree down, but you have to, you know, reinforce the shoreline using the log, and you can remove some of the limbs, but you have to restore if a log comes down and damages the shoreline and creates an erosion hazard or something like that, then mitigation has to take place to reduce the mitigation or to reduce the erosion hazards that might be created by something we're doing in the shorelines. So I'll, I'll work with you guys to, to try to, you know, get you through that document so everybody understands what the rules are.
Thank you.
So just kind of going a little bit further back for policy considerations, do the freshwaterways in Ocean Shores have designated uses as per Washington Department of Ecology and/or total maximum daily load?
You mean from a stormwater?
Nope.
Standpoint?
Yep.
You, when you say daily load?
Yeah, so, so total maximum daily loads are used to like look at the loads that are allowable for certain designated uses for a waterway. So if, so I think I kind of know the answer, I just wanted to confirm. We're not managed in that way, are we?
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of, not, not in the context that you're asking, I don't believe. Would that be like number of users or boats or that type of thing as far as loading from a recreational standpoint?
No, no, no. Total maximum daily load is looking at the nutrient content coming in from outside sources.
Okay, so that would be source, point source control, and that has to do?
Non-point source.
Okay, non-point?
Yeah.
So that would have to do with our storm grain, the, the storm grain component too. And that's one of the things that's going to come up as our master program for the, for the shorelines and freshwaterways develops, we'll be looking at that kind of stuff.
And, and no designated uses on, so for example, if Washington Department of Ecology is looking at a stream or a lake or pond or canal, then they'll look at designated uses. For example, that's like putting in the canoes or, you know, boating and something like that. Swimming would be a designated use. So, and so we're not managed in that way.
We have defined designated uses within the shoreline master program.
Okay.
And they, so they've got a, a short list. It's not a huge list, but, but there are designated uses. And there are prohibited uses, so, yep.
And has there any, ever been any imaginative for the biodiversity in the canals or the lakes?
I'm not aware, I've not been involved in any discussions regarding that. So there could be a discussion about that because we did introduce the, the grass part 15 years ago or so. And, and so, you know, that, that would have an impact on biodiversity.
Anybody else have any more?
Do you know anything about harvesting and what? Have you ever heard of this?
Yeah, well, it's, it's something that's been done in Yeah, well, it's, it's, um, something that's been done in serious. Various, um, iterations over the years. Um, the freshwater ways, um, corporation actually built a, um, a barge. Um, that is a weed harvester that they've used, um, with some success. Um. Did Bruce correct me if I'm wrong? Didn't we have a third party come in and do some harvesting after you guys or in parallel with you guys with another? Brand of harvester?
It's, no, there was, uh, there was gonna be a trial last week in July and it didn't happen. Um, I, I can't say that Pennyworth is the easiest weed to. Uh, uh, get out of the waterways or they're, they're on top or connected to the, the banks, not, they're not down below and. Uh, we've done some manual harvesting, quite a bit of it, where we would cut. On two sides of a, of a mat, it's closed on top, it's a mat and grab it, we throw a hook on it and we. We pull it out of there. It's the, uh, it's the only manual harvesting that doesn't kill you.
Well, I could pull mine out here. I start pulling it out in March.
Yeah.
But what I was, some people have mentioned that Pennyworth when it's dried. And then crushed up can actually be used as fertilizer. Now I've tried to find this somewhere.
Many uses, it's, uh, some Asian.
You can also eat it.
Yes, yes, Asian countries, uh, eat it for eating and they make tea out of it. Um, I started rumor and telling you you could get high from it. They'll send you a bag of Pennyworth.
Make a deal with Ben's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, that was just another thought I was having about harvesting.
Um, and if you don't mind, just, uh, uh, to add to that. Is that kind of a funny idea, but there have been groups that have basically marketed. What they pulled out of their waterways and made cottage industries out of it.
Well, and the zoo does it with zoo doo and that was what really made me think about this. If it could be harvested, bagged and sold even, I, I thought.
I like.
It's a good thought.
Do you?
Yeah.
Well.
I was thinking, that's what I was thinking, uh, before. Is, is I wonder if we could use it to, to talk to the topsoil people and see if they can, uh. Merge that into some of their topsoil.
Oh.
If they'd be interested in. Because they do their own blend right over here by the paws.
Might find some use for that stuff.
For blend, for topsoil possibly.
I'd be, I, I don't know, but I'd be not surprised if, you know, it could be used for livestock. Hope to look into that. It could be the Pennyworth Kings.
That we did?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I know.
Okay, uh, the next would be good of the order. So this is just like your opportunity to say something. Uh, something you maybe want to see on the next agenda, what you've witnessed on the waterways, anything like that. So we'll start with Robert. Do you have any?
Um, well, the harvester, what, I've heard it's being worked on the one that we have. What is the, what is it? Doing right now?
Uh, what it's doing right now, it's sitting outside. We're, we're on a hunt. We're looking for some covered storage. Uh, to get it, uh, taken care of. Um. We tried the. One of the airport hangars, not, I don't know, we tried the south end firehouse. See if we can get in one of those days. I couldn't do it there, but we've. Uh, our previous covered storage is no longer available. So we're looking for something and, um. Uh, you know, there might be a, might be something out of the sewage. Treatment plant or maybe a building I'm very stupid in because nobody's gonna, wants to work on that on the rig.
I know that there's not. We're running out of space out there right now. I talked to Sean about it already.
Wood size footprint is it?
It's, uh, approximately, uh, you know, twenty-four feet, uh, that's including the tongue on the trailer. And it's, uh, it's, he's a high door.
They didn't have anything at the maintenance facility?
No, as, you know, there's surplus equipment in there. Uh, I don't, it's, I, I don't think you want to leave the surplus equipment outside either, you know, as you, I can. It's all rusted, you're not gonna get much for it.
And.
We're still working on it and I have a reading with John tomorrow.
Hey, Connie?
Um, I live on the water and my main concern of course is the water. And I've noticed recently how green we are, which I'm not accustomed to seeing on the Grand Canal so much. Um, the swirling green. I mean, I see it going through. Okay, we call it the Amazon, but we call it the Amazon. Uh, but we see it there, but not so much on the Grand and thank you for telling me about. Um, we're in our lowest ever because I walk out on my little beach now. And I think, wow, my dog can walk almost all the way out to near my boat now. Um, so I, I'm concerned. With everything about it, with everything about the water. Uh, the color, the quality, everything. That's all.
John?
No comment.
Okay. Is it, uh, really nothing, although I'm curious what type of, of minutes we generally. Use, do we use, you know, like an action form for our minutes?
Um, yeah.
Typically or?
Yes, okay, so we don't do verbatim minutes. We do action item minutes. Um, and there's, those are all on the freshwater ways page and so I'll give you a template to go off of. Yeah, yeah, Robert.
Robert.
Yeah. Hey, Barbara?
Yeah, um, I think that the freshwater ways are an amazing amenity for ocean shores. They are beautiful and I think they're enthralled and I hope I can help.
Anybody that doesn't have anything else, we'll take a motion to adjourn. So, second, and all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, the meetings are always the first Monday of each month unless the Monday called on holiday. Then it's whenever we get into life.